Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the 23rd meeting of the mayor and city council on Monday, January 11th at 6:00 PM to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. DeWalt? Mr. Les?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Sidnor?
Here.
President Nicholas?
Here.
Mayor Moe?
I'm here. The next agenda item, the approval of the minutes, is going to be deferred until the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, January 25th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We're moving on to the report of the mayor and city council, and I'd like to start with Councilman DeWalt. Councilman DeWalt, are you there? Maybe you're on mute.
Madam President, I don't see Mr. DeWalt yet. I've just sent a text.
Okay, well, we'll move on to Councilman Les.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I just two items. I want to thank the members of the ICCL for their hot meal distribution on Saturday. Bit chilly with the wind, but Francis and the mayor and I stuck it out, and they had a good turnout. They had over 400 sandwiches and sodas and potato chips handed out. And again, it's this inclusive actions by the various churches and organizations around Laurel that make Laurel special. Condolences to the law enforcement officers and their families who were injured in last week's events at the Capitol. For the ones that are still undergoing treatment, we wish them a speedy recover recovery. And again, condolences to the families, those that lost their lives. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Councilman Sidnor.
Good evening, Madam President. Thank you. I want to say a Happy New Year to everyone, but I didn't say Happy New Year to on our work session. I want to first of all, thank the mayor and city council for co-sponsoring the Laura, City of Laurel code drive we had with Laura Police Department, with Fraternal Elite Fitness, with the AFG, American Federation Government Employees Local 1456, and First Baptist Church of Laurel. 300, over 350 coats was donated. The coats will be distributed by First Baptist Church of Laurel on January 23rd, 2021. The time's going to be from 10 o'clock AM to 2 o'clock PM. The address is 15,000 First Baptist Church, First Baptist Lane. So that was a big success. All the partners, community leaders partnering with that. Also, I had the opportunity yesterday, I was honored and privileged, actually, I got a call to be on a conference call with Senator Van Hollen, Congressman Anthony Brown, Chairman Prince George County, Kevin Hawkins was on the call as well, Montgomery County County Exec was on the call, and a host of other elected officials, really in reference to supporting the Maryland United COVID Relief Coalition Act that was trying to actually put pressure on the governor to use money from the ready day funds to assist vulnerable families and smaller businesses in need. So that was an opportunity. I spoke on that and supported that. As you know, this weekend, January 15th, was Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday, and he would be, he will be 90 years old. He was still alive today. Now, Dr. King is one of my favorite heroes. The sacrifice that he made for me to be in a position that I am today, and so many other African Americans being positioned is can't say enough words. So I think with Dr. King, we already honor Dr. King more than we do because Dr. King was speaking the truth back then. And I think one of the speeches that I like to listen to all the time every year, I listen to it quite often, really, the speech he made in 1967 at Stanford University called "The Other America", and really, he's talking about two Americas. And I think we really want to honor Dr. King, and really, we got to admit that we have a race problem in the United States of America. Not saying that our country's not a great country, but we got to admit the truth. We got, we do have a problem in the United States of America, and we got to really get ahead of that. But I also think Dr. King would be very happy as well, because one of his natives of his home state of Georgia was elected to the United States Senate, went to the same college he went to, Morehouse University, Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia. Also, he is a senior pastor at the Church of Dr. King, was a pastor as well, you know, at the Baptist Church. So all that's going on, we still making progress as an America. Saying Dr. King said a lot of powerful words, but I think the thing that I love about Dr. King, he said two things, be true to what you say on paper. Until we be true to what we say on paper as a country and a nation, you know, we're going to get better. I know we are, you know, so it's just that, we just got to tell the truth. You know, we got to tell the truth, and you can't heal until you tell the truth. So that concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor, excuse me, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted, I hosted a senior gift drive for the senior citizens at Laurel Lakes in Selbourn House. On December 23rd, I dropped off gift bags, gift bags and gift cards, along with gift cards and gift bags to the senior citizens there, along with, in partnership with the Distinguished Pearl Foundation. I want to say thank you to our sponsors, State Senator Jim Rosepet, Councilman Carl DeWalt, the Royal House Chapel International under Reverend Emmanuel Agomeda, the Uplift Church under Pastor Marquez Ball, and the Prince George's County Council Chair, Councilman Calvin Hawkins. I want to say thank you to them for sponsoring that. Also, I attended the coat drive we had, and it, as Councilman Sidnor said, there was a lot of, a lot of coats that were donated, and that's going to be good for the community. And as also as Councilman Les said, I was out on Sunday with Mayor Moe and Councilman Les with the ICCL with their food distribution through our City of Laurel Food Distribution Program. So that was, that was pretty well attended by the community. It was very cold, but well worth it, you know. I want to echo Councilman Sidnor with the remarks on Martin Luther King. And I think we all, we all know, we have to recognize we have a problem in the country. And until we do recognize it, we won't move forward. But I have faith that we will. That's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. In giving my report, I too would like to echo Councilman Sidnor in his acknowledgement of Dr. King. I would also like to just send my thoughts and prayers to the families and to all of the elected officials that were part of that chaos that was on Capitol Hill. I know that several people have lost their lives, and I just pray for those families and their circle of friends. I also like to just continue to keep the awareness alive with this COVID pandemic, you know, just encouraging people to continue to wear their masks, continue to wear their safety eyewear, and to continue to social distance. Mayor Moe?
Madam President, I think Councilman DeWalt came on to.
Oh, he did? Okay, I'm sorry, Councilman DeWalt.
Sorry about that. I was a little late getting in here. I too was at the coat drive up at First Baptist Church, and it was, it was well attended, and we gathered a lot of coats, and most of the coats were brand new, children, adults, male and female, and it was a wonderful thing to see what First Baptist does and, and the, and the cooperation by several citizens also helped us out, helping out Councilman Sidnor. I want to remind everybody that Thursday is, I try to get their fundraiser every time. Thursday is Laurel Cats fundraiser at Tampico. It's all takeout now because of the restaurants being closed, other than getting takeout, and a certain percentage of it will go to Laurel Cats, one of their monthly fundraisers. I just want to reiterate, reiterate one thing that I said at the work session, that the vaccine has been distributed, so many doses to each county. And we had Montgomery, and this was in the Washington Post, we had Montgomery, Howard, and Caroline Counties that have given, given out and distributed 80, over 80% of the vaccines they receive for people. And it was disheartening to see that in Prince George's County, where we have the most, most, most cases of anyone in Maryland, that only 4.7% of them were given out. I also read that the county executive from Prince George's County actually gave a reply to Governor Hogan and said that we shouldn't criticize, we should send help. And that was her remarks to Governor Hogan. Well, I fully, I'm retired, I know a lot of people, I can't give shots, but I know a lot of people that can. I used to be an EMT, I'm no longer one, but I know a lot of people, my, that are my neighbors and things, that could give out shots during their free time. If they're, they need any transportation, if Prince George's County needs any transportation as far as getting seniors to sites where they get the shots or anything like that, I would more than be happy to volunteer as much time and as much resources as they need. So if the county executive does need help, she could put me on the list for doing that, and I could gather a lot of support for other people as long as we start getting these vaccines out in the community, because after almost 11 months of watching a lot of these small businesses go under, a lot of them are hurting, a lot of them are suffering, a lot of our residents are not able to pay their mortgage, their utilities, they're laid off. I know there was a huge problem with the, being laid off and getting your checks. I think that's been resolved to a certain extent now. I'm sick of this virus, and if we have a vaccine and we're getting it, and there's supposed to be another one in the wind coming shortly, and a lot more vaccines going to be delivered here, and if we need help, I would more likely than go recruit help or do anything I can to help out the county in any, any single way that they need, as long as we get our seniors inoculated and we get our first responders inoculated. I would also like to give my condolences to the family of the Capitol Police Officer who was killed during the attempted siege at a Capitol building. You know, as a police officer, a former police officer, your heart always breaks when you see somebody that, a police officer that dies needlessly, and I know we've had probably close to 150 officers killed this year in the line of duty, and I, my condolences go out to his family members. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple condolences to the friends and family of Bill Miles, who passed away on 28th of December. Also, to the officer Brian Sidnik, who is the Capitol Police Officer, who was killed in the light of duty, we thank and pray for him and his family on his passing. Also want to, speedy recoveries to our city administrator, Bill Goddard. With that said, I do want to let the public know that Lou Anne Crook is our acting deputy, is our acting city administrator, and Christian Pulli is our acting deputy city administrator, with Robert Love as the acting director in the Department of Planning and Zoning. I do want to let everyone know, although we can't do our usual reef laying at the Martin Luther King Memorial, we will have at least two individuals lay a reef down in honor and in memory of his name, and his memory at the Dr. Martin Luther King Memorial out in our memorial gardens. I also want to let the general public know as well that Dr. King's vision and of a world coming together will not stop us due to a pandemic. I'm happy to announce that the public can attend the city's annual Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service event in January 18th, 2021, from 11:00 AM until noon. Due to the pandemic, it will be hosted virtually. And again, I want to thank our Department of Communications for the work that they continue to do to try to help remember Dr. King and our Day of Service. So that will happen, we'll, a press release may have already been sent out, but you can get that information on our website as, as well. I do want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, hope they had a good holiday and were safe. Today, you may have heard Governor Hogan had a press conference regarding COVID release over $1 billion. So that information, I would encourage you to take a look, go to the state's website, the governor's website, to see that all broken down. That will be to help individuals, families, and that will require the legislature to take action on that. We did have, in December, January, we've had numerous elected officials, Prince George County elected officials update on COVID-19, as well as the municipal association had their, Prince George County Municipal Association had their virtual meeting. We've had numerous calls on COVID-19 for municipal leaders from the governor's office, as, as well as I did attend virtually the Board of Directors for COG, Council of Governments. Reefs Across America went off well. There is a new sign up. If you're interested in cleaning up the reefs, you have to sign up for that. Again, want to thank everybody who participated and did it in a safe manner. There was a grab and go at the food at distribution at Laurel High School last month that I attended. I do want to thank them. We're going to try to sit down with them a little bit later, as we've done today. We had a meeting with all the clergy regarding food distribution and try to work with them and coordinate through our Department of Emergency Management, as well as getting that information so we can share with the public as well. The mayor and city council did make a check presentation right before Christmas to the Laurel AFSM referral, and they were very appreciative of that. Just did have the opportunity as well to attend Senator Carden's virtual town hall meeting, and as you heard, the Islamic Community Center of Laurel did a hot food distribution over the weekend. There's another one coming up over the weekend, so check our platforms, our social platforms to get that information as well. On January 18th, city offices will be closed in observation, observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Day, so trash and recycling, you'll need to get that information as well off our website. I do want to let everyone know, if you go to the county's website, the vaccine plan is there. There is some differences between what the county has laid out and what the state has laid out, so it's important to follow what the county has. And if, there are different phases, and Phase 1, which is where we're at now in January and February, really, the vaccine is for healthcare workers, essential personnel, and at-risk populations. There is a, and those are like the first responders, licensed and registered providers, healthcare workers. There is a Phase 1B, which will start in February, March. You'll have to sign up for this, sign up for these to be able to get the shot. And those are, again, some at-risk, ages 75 and up, assisted living, educators, education in child sector, teachers, critical government leadership, continuity of, of government. After that, there is a Phase 1C, and that's in March, April. Those are ages 65 to 74, health services that are not covered under the Phase 1, public safety not covered under Phase 1, food and agriculture workers, grocery store workers, transit workers, postal service workers. And then there's a Phase 2, which is critical infrastructure personnel and at-risk populations. And then the last is the general public. So keep an eye out for that information. We're going to try to make sure we advertise it as well, when this could all change after the new president comes in because of what they're talking about doing, pushing the, pushing the vaccine out. And information, like I said, really is under Prince George's County, under the Health Department for that. So I encourage you to take a look. If you don't understand something or you need some help, please feel free to call members of the mayor and city council, and we'll try to get you the right information. Madam President, I would like to make one statement tonight, that I'll just take a few minutes to read a statement into the record regarding the actions of those that took part on the attack of our, attack of our and the people's United States Capitol on Wednesday, January 6th, 2021. I can remember turning on the TV and seeing the mob of people breaking windows, kicking down doors, hitting people with sticks, and yes, seeing this mob attack members of our law enforcement community who were there to protect the members of Congress and the general public. I thought I was watching something from another country where it happens. We are all proud Americans, and I believe our first, and I believe in our First Amendment right to free speech. I also believe in lawful public assembly, but what I witnessed was anything but lawful. This mob was all about doing damage to our Capitol, threatening our representatives of the people, law enforcement officers, the press corps, and members of the general public. This is not the way to show your dissatisfaction. I had, I had so many different emotions watching this unfold in real time. It was to say, it was to say the least, unbelievable. To the members of the Laurel Police Department, members of the Laurel Police Department were asked to support the law enforcement officers on Wednesday, January 6th, 2021, but they weren't called. They were ready and they were able to assist, and as I said, but never called. There's been, they've been at almost every inaugural event that I can think of, and I'm sure they will be ready to assist this year. I did read the Washington Post over the weekend, and I want the public to know, we don't know of any city employee or officer that was involved in any event that played any part of the disgraceful acts that took place causing disorder and breaking the law. If this can happen in our nation's US Capitol, it can happen anywhere. All of those, all of those who broke the law and attacked our Capitol must be held accountable. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The next agenda item is a general public hearing. I opened the public hearing at 6:24. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, no, we have not had any members of the public sign up to speak.
Okay, I closed the public hearing at 6:25. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the City of Laurel will be holding virtual meetings. The public is asked to submit written testimony on agenda items to the Laurel City Clerk at her email address, which is K R A U at laurel.md.us by 2:00 PM on the meeting days, and to register for the Zoom meeting information. Moving to our next agenda item is a consideration of a bid recommendation in Code 10 system upgrade. Mr. Frost, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor and council members, before you and I discussed the work session, we are doing a major upgrade in this calendar year. As part of that process, tonight, we're asking you to fund two pieces of the upgrade. The actual system upgrade with the integration and the document conversions. And we're also asking you to approve the Tyler Document Management System, which is the only management system that's compatible with the new version. Tyler Technology is the vendor. This will be a sole source purchase, this, as this software is proprietary. It is a currently funded CIP project. The cost of the software upgrade itself is $38,900. The purchase of the Tyler Document Management System and Document Conversion is $26,999 for a total tonight of $65,899. Staff is recommending approval, and we're asking that you approve this purchase.
Thank you. I'll start off with Councilman Smith. Do you have any questions, sir?
I have no questions.
Councilman DeWalt?
No questions.
Councilman Les?
No questions, Madam President.
Councilman Sidnor?
No questions.
Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the bid recommendation for In Code 10 system upgrade.
In a second, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Our next agenda item is the fourth public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1964, an ordinance amending the City of Laurel election laws. I read the title into the record, and I opened the public hearing at 6:28. Since no one has signed up to speak, I closed the public hearing at 6:28. Can I get a motion?
Madam Clerk, before you call for a motion, I want to bring some attention to ordinance number 1964. If the clerk can pull it up, it was something concerning, referenced the campaign treasure should be a resident of Maryland. Then it's that city, and it's got to be a year, you know. I'm very aware that we don't, the treasure has to be a resident of Maryland, but it's, their language need to be corrected, so you've got to bring it up to look at it. You can follow me as I.
Mr. Sidnor, which page? I'm sorry, which page?
I'm not a page, it's 6:25, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number 1964, 6:25.
Okay, section 6-25, a subsection A?
Yes.
The campaign treasure shall be a resident of Maryland.
Right, then you got to scratch it.
Okay, we've scratched city and said Maryland.
Okay, and then it says it has to be like a, in a resident for a year. I don't think that should be in there as well.
That, it does say prior to the date of his or her appointment, they would have had to have lived in the state of Maryland for a year.
I, I think we should have some more conversation about that. I think the treasure, in my perspective, the treasure doesn't need to be, I mean, treasure can be living, I don't know, it's just prior to the election. I don't like that language. I rather thought it'd be the treasure, my perspective, once again, the treasure shouldn't have to be, yeah, it shouldn't, just being a resident of the state of Maryland, really, is all we need to say. But we're discussing how the council member agree or disagree, I mean. But we have discussion, now the council member agree or disagree, I mean.
I, it... Any more discussion?
Uh, Madam President, uh, you see, no, I think goes hand in hand with, um, again, we have a requirement in this document that calls for candidates to be a resident for a year. I mean, I'm fine with that. I, again, if they're a resident of Maryland, and they've been here for a year, they ought to have, uh, have the ability to act as a treasurer. I, that's my thought. I, I, what I, and, and again, I don't see, I don't see what, how that handicaps anybody. Perhaps you have some insights into that.
Does anyone else have any concerns? So are we going to table this and have more discussion, or?
I would like to see it tabled and, uh, maybe give us a little bit more time to look into the one year as being a Laurel, uh, Maryland resident and see what, uh, uh, see what I could research for my own, my own sake.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to hold the, um, legislation until the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, January the twenty-fifth?
Um, let me check, Councilman, uh, Councilman Smith, do you have any concerns?
My, my concern was more so about the contribution amount, just being at the state level of six thousand, um, but this was, this was an amazing concern of mine, uh, about the treasurer, but seeing as Council, Councilman Signor has a, wants to have a table discussion about it, so.
I have a problem, if this, if the majority of the council wanted to move forward, I don't have an issue with that. I mean, this is what the march is about, majority rule, so it's just something that brought my attention, so I'm, I'm, you know, majority want to go forward with it, it's okay with me.
Uh, Madam President, as I understand, Mr. Signor, you don't have a problem with the Maryland requirement. Your issue is with the one-year residency requirement, correct?
Yes, but it's treasure, yeah.
Yes, I understand, okay. Uh, well, Madam President, I'm willing to, going to, uh, uh, you know, it's been suggested, move this to the next work session for further discussion.
Okay, Kim, can you tell us that next date, please?
Madam President, um, the next work session won't be until February the, uh, sec, the third. I would like to suggest that we possibly, um, hold the public hearing at the meeting on the twenty-fifth and take action on this, because it has been a while since we've been considering it, and we do have to get some legal notices in the newspapers to advertise to the public. If you want to hold it until the February work session, that would then take us to the February eighth mayor and city council meeting to act on it.
And are you saying that that will not give us enough time to give out the proper notices?
We will still be, we will still have time, it will just delay the process, just so everybody knows that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, can I speak, Madam President?
Sure.
I think the next, um, meeting on the twenty-fifth, I forgot the date, what is the next meeting we have, I think it should be resolved then, you know, like I say, hour, it's not a deal breaker to me, I just something that, um, that my treasure gotta be living here a year, just, just my preference.
Okay, Kim, so we'll move it to our next meeting, um...
If I could state the administrations, and maybe this would help, um, I do believe that if you're gonna be a treasurer and you put that they need to be a resident of the state of Maryland, they should be a resident of the state of Maryland more than one day. So, uh, you know, we would compromise if that's the case and do six months, uh, but I do believe there needs to be a timeframe on that. I really think that we need to decide on this and not hold this up for one, um, you know, one word, um, pretty much, because time, you know, there is an election that will be coming up, and the more we can get it out, the better it'll be. So if that helps, uh, Councilman Signor, we'd, we'd agree to that.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, like I say, I don't, I don't have an issue with it tonight. If the council over, you know, wants to move forward with that, it's fine with me. Like I say, it's the majority, I just...
I understand that, but you were the one objected to the word, and they followed along, so I wanted to at least see if you were fine with that, to see then if others would be as well. That's all.
Yeah, I understand, I mean...
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, with the mayor's comments there, I'm just checking, getting a, getting a pulse check as to see what your thoughts are on that for the six months, and also with Councilman Smith and Les.
If he, if Councilman Signor has the least bit of reservations on it, uh, another two weeks, I don't think's gonna, uh, uh, burden us that much, and I would rather him be one hundred percent, uh, confident in what he, what he wants or what we decide on, and two, I don't think two weeks is a long time.
I mean, I mean, can I say one more thing? Uh, I should say to Councilman DeWalt, but I'm, I'm fine with, like I say, you know, it's, I'm not gonna like hold the legislation up because I disagree with the, the time period, you know, so it's not, it's not a deal breaker, I appreciate it though, but it's not a deal breaker to me. You guys can move forward tonight, and you know, I'm fine with that.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, I think that Keith and I need to play Tip O'Neil tonight and compromise, and let's go along with the mayor's suggestion for the six months, uh, and we can move, move this legislation along, and then if we need to do something else in the future, we can do that, uh, Mr. Signor. That's my suggestion.
But I wanted to, I'm fine with it, so...
Yeah, good, good.
Okay.
That's not a bad idea, Madam President, that's a good idea. Go with the six months, and like Councilman Les said, we could change it down the road if we're not happy with it or something, but, you know, they're gonna have to be a Maryland resident, that's, that's definitely...
Right.
If it's six months, and if we need to change that, we could do that down the road. I agree, I would vote yes.
Okay, all right, so just starting over, I called, um, Councilman Signor, is that a yes from you?
You gotta call the motion, ma'am, I mean...
I did call the motion, and I was calling for a second, but I'm going back to the first now again. Let me read, let me read it over again. This is ordinance number nineteen sixty-four, an ordinance amending the City of Laurel election laws. May I get a motion, please?
Madam President, I'll move to approve, uh, charter...
With the amendment?
That's correct. I'm, I move for the, the approval of this charter resolution with the amendment that the date for the treasurer is six months residency.
Madam President, it's ordinance number nineteen sixty-four, not the charter resolution.
I'm sorry, ordinance number nineteen sixty-four, I apologize.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
Concur.
Our next agenda item is the fourth public hearing and public action on Charter Resolution Number One Seventy-two, a resolution amending the charter of the City of Laurel election laws. I've read the title into the record, and I opened the public hearing at six thirty-nine. Kim, is there any, excuse me, Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, no, there are no members of the public signed up to speak.
I closed the public...
Madam President, sorry, before you close it, can I, um, do, what's the procedure you want to do? You want to close it first or take comments from the council? How you want to do it?
You can go on to make your comments, that's fine.
Okay, um, once again, uh, Madam Clerk, I don't, I don't have the legislation, I should have printed it, but I can tell you, uh, but it's, um, ordinance number one seventy-two or resolution one seventy-two, I can't remember which one it was, but it was...
One seventy, it's, um, Resolution One Seventy-two.
Okay, Resolution Number One Seventy-two, bring your attention to, uh, section six oh seven, vote by mail. They say the procedures will be established by the Board of Election Supervisors. I just don't see what are the procedures are. Are we wait until the Board of Election Supervisors tell us that prior to the election? Or is it something in, in place that we should see now, prior to us, um, moving forward with this, uh, piece of legislation?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
The, uh, acting on the legislation as it is, as it stands, would allow our Board of Elections to set the procedures for the vote by mail, should it be determined that we're going to use vote by mail for that election. The Board of Elections has a meeting set up tentatively for the twenty-seventh of January, and one of the agenda items is the process for vote by mail.
Okay.
I don't need difficulty tonight, I just had a follow-up question as well with that, though. I would like to see what the procedures are before we vote on it, but it might be something different from what the council concur on. The council might want to see a certain procedure, and, and we say yes to it, that might not be the procedure the Board of Election want to do. Then I guess we, can we go back to, uh, amend that? Of course we can, but I thought it would be, this time was taking place, that the Board of Elections would give us the procedures prior to tonight's meeting, so we can see what they are, instead of going back and forth when they write them. That's just my perspective.
Madam President, it's my understanding that, uh, the law will allow us to use vote by mail, should it be determined to be necessary, um, depending on the state of the city or what, or what's going on. The changes i- in the charter will allow us to do vote by mail, but not necessarily require that they do vote by mail. That would be determined by the board making a recommendation to the mayor and city council. That's my understanding.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I'm a little confused on that one. Can we, as a legis, as a council, set the rules for the vote, vote by legislation? We gotta listen to the Board of Elections. I thought that we can set how the procedures are. I know we can take recommendations from them, but I thought we, as a legislative body, we can determine how the procedures are to vote by mail, any other legislation, so, I mean, just help me out.
Madam President, if I could?
Yes.
Um, it's important to remember what we're adopting here, this is a charter resolution. This has changed, will change our charter to allow us to do certain things, in this case, vote by mail along with other things. You've got to have that set, that is a council responsibility. The procedures that, um, on how and where to set up is, falls under the Board of Election Supervisors, they're non, um, they're non, uh, in part, they're an impartial group. Um, if the council wants to write the wrong rules or regulations on how to run an election, you would have to do that by, uh, an ordinance. Other than that, what we have tried to do over the years is to allow the Board of Election Supervisors, which under state law, they are to run and set up. Um, so the charter resolution that you're adopting here really isn't about how to do it, it's to allow it.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that clarity, I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at six forty-four, and now ask for a motion.
I make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, Resolution Number One Seventy-two.
Can I get a second?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
Uh, I'm gonna concur, and, um, I do want to make a, a statement, because I know that there could be public listening as well. I do think it's important as this moves forward, for those that are interested, whenever the next meeting is for the Board of Election Supervisors, they're required to hold open meetings as well, and you should be expressing your views if you have, um, ideas or comments, so, um, on the, I think, Kim, on the twenty-seventh, you were talking about, but if we can make sure the general public knows as well, uh, I think it's important for them to hear. Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the second public hearing with possible action on Charter Resolution Number One Seventy-three, a resolution amending the charter of the City of Laurel, Maryland by amending Article Four Hundred Administration and specifically amending Section Four Oh One, City Administrator amending Section Four Oh Three, Deputy City Administrator amending Section Four Ten, Deputy of Budget and Personnel Services amending Section Four Forty, Police Chief adding new Section Four Sixty-four, Director of the Department of Communications and adding new Section Four Sixty-eight, Director of the Department of Information Technology, Chief Information Officer. I've read the title into the record, I opened the public hearing at six forty-six. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, Madam President, there have been no members of the public signed up to speak.
I closed the public hearing at six forty-six. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion for three, what is it, Number One Seventy-three?
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
I'll concur.
The next agenda item is the introduction and first public hearing of ordinance number nineteen sixty-six, text amendment number two five seven, on ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, amending Laurel City Code, Chapter Twenty, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, Article One Zoning, twenty dash one point seven, definitions to update the definitions for various terms used in Chapter Twenty, twenty dash six point fifteen, area, yard, and height regulations, twenty dash six point sixteen, schedule of area, yard, and height regulations for residential usage, twenty dash six point two, twenty-three, accessory structures, bulk res- regulations, twenty dash seven point eight, table of commercial usage, twenty dash nine point five, table of industrial usage, twenty dash twelve point three, a table of mixed-use transportation-oriented usages, usage, I'm sorry, twenty dash twelve point five, site plans, twenty dash seventeen point one, purpose and scope, twenty point seventeen point two, definition, twenty dash seventeen point three, general provisions, twenty dash seventeen point four, regulations by zones, twenty dash seventeen point five, legal non-conformity maintenance and repair, twenty dash seventeen point six, construction specifications, twenty dash eighteen point two, non-conforming billboards, twenty dash twenty point five, fences and walls, twenty dash twenty-two point five three liquor stores, twenty dash twenty-two point seventy-two, licensed premises of liquor dispensaries, twenty dash twenty-nine point ten, mandatory dedication of fee in lieu of open space, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Love, you have the floor.
Thank you, and, uh, good evening, Madam President, Mayor, and members of council. As presented, a work session, January sixth, before you is text amendment number two fifty-seven, ordinance number nineteen sixty-six, as required by the City of Laurel Code, providing legislation to amend the city's Unified Land Development Code. This proposed ordinance will provide amendments to various divisions and sections of Chapter Twenty of the Unified Land Development Code. Changes include adding definitions for light and heavy manufacturing, retail sales establishment, especially liquor store and strip development. The schedule of area, yard, and height regulations for residential use table will be cha, will be changed to modify the rear and front yard setback of some residential zones to have consistency throughout the zones within the code. A table with zoning requirements for the signage, fences, and walls, patios, and decks will be added to the code to clearly outline regulations for development instead of requirements illustrated in Word format. The table will hopefully make it easier for residents and business owners to digest the requirements and navigate the code. There are two proposed changes that would allow for the director or their designee approval for accessory structures and fences located in commercial or industrial zone districts. For accessory structures less than 300 square feet that include but not limited to garages, sheds or gazebos and fences six feet or shorter. Staff would review the revised site plan for compliance and ensure zoning requirements are met prior to the issuance of the permit. Furthermore, for the licensed premises of licensed medical marijuana dispensaries, that section will be changed to specifically stay located in the city of Laurel. So there are, so there isn't any confusion about dispensaries that may be located outside of city limits. If there are any questions regarding the amendment, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions? I'll start with Councilman Sidnor.
No questions.
Councilman Smith?
I'm with this. Questions?
Councilman Les?
Yeah, Robert, let me just ask, we no longer refer to some kinds of development as strip development. It's inline. Is that correct?
Well, we're proposing to name it actually strip development again.
I think they've gotten away from that in most planning books that I've looked at, planning articles. They've gotten away from the strip to call them inline.
In line.
But again, I'll just point that out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes, Mr. Love, I think this falls under area yard and height regulations for residential areas. I was under the, I had asked Ms. Pooley at the last meeting about what the changes were gonna be. And she only mentioned the rear setback was gonna be changed from 50 feet to 25 feet. Is that correct?
The change on that one actually is going to be, depending what it is, it's actually, they were, they're going down to 20 is what it was gonna be. And those are for townhouse and plexes, which in, within the RT, the R30 and the R18. And then the front yard depth is gonna be reduced from 50 feet to 20 feet in those sections.
So both of them are gonna be taken from 50 to 20. When you're measuring that 20 feet or the, it used to be 50 feet, are you measuring from the back of the structure to the end of the backyard? Is that how that goes?
Yes, sir.
So you're reducing that in the front from 50 to 20 feet and in the back from 50 to 20 feet. So you're actually taking off 60 feet of yard with all these new properties that are being built.
Yes, we're looking just in those sections. Now, I think a lot of the ones you're speaking of are typically in overlays or PUD areas and they are brought forward and they, that's where they decide, they come in and ask for a certain setback in those. Those were altered through those overlay or PUD amendments. These are just in general, like I said, general zoning districts that we have.
And cert, and the current developers, this will, this will affect the current developers too. They will be grandfathered into this as long as they apply for it?
No. This is, this, this would be from whenever it's voted upon by that point. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be grandfathered in, no.
I mean, I mean, if they're building right now, if we vote on this tonight, then they're able to adjust the 50 feet in the front and 50 feet in the back to 20 feet?
No, that's incorrect. No, they can't.
Until they complete the project?
Well, they, at that point, they've already submitted. They've been approved through, if it's a big, like through planning commission or any, any of those means or through council, however it was, then they wouldn't be able to. They, they would have to go with their approved setbacks that they were given via their final site landscape plan.
Oh, that makes me feel a lot better. So they can't change. They can't adjust that at all.
No.
Are you also aware of this survey that the Tux and Greens has sent around to the outlining the areas of the Tux and Greens that they recently put out there?
I've not seen that survey, no, sir.
From what I understand, they've run into some issues down there. I was down there last week and what originally, I guess, was gonna be back along, only way I know the directions are, it's back along the end of the property. It was where the 17th fairway was, which was a very long fairway. It was a par four, which is very long. And that whole development now in that area and further in is, is water. And we're also having a issue with the, the people that live on Creekview where the stream that was behind Creekview is actually, they get so much runoff from 197 and there's developments up there. The stream is actually coming and it's eroding into their backyard and it looks like it's gonna start going that way. And it might even break the area down by where this big, big lake is now, I would call it a lake. And he is apparently trying to get, from what I understand with this survey, he's, he's scheduled to have 389 units there. And he's looking to get it approved back up to 450 units. And if it's not, if he, he's unable to get that, he, he thinks that it's gonna take 50,000 more cubic feet of fill to come into that project, which was gonna, is gonna take, with trucks going in there and out of there, it's gonna take almost five to six months. His original, if I've heard it, I must have heard it 100 times, was this development was supposed to take very small, limited amount of fill to get it up to the level where it wouldn't flood. I don't think 50,000 cubic feet is just a little bit of dirt, especially if it's gonna take you trucks coming in and out of there all day up to six months. From what the person that gave me the information, this survey, apparently 80% of the people down there don't want any of the, any of the things he's proposing. Now, obviously, he hasn't contacted the city or anything like that. But my main concern, and he wants to do away with, also in that survey, he wants to do away with detached single-family homes and he wants to put townhouses on because he feels that that's gonna be easier to do considering the circumstances of this. And that's my concern with, when this issue came up about area yard and height regulations for residential units. If we're, if we're looking at any sort of green living or sustainability or protecting our environment, my goal, or I, I know a lot of people that are worried about the environment, would, would be to keep it at the 50 foot. But as long as, as long as this isn't gonna happen until after we vote on it and it's not gonna affect any of the current current projects that are in, 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 I would prefer it to remain at 50 feet. Now, I know that PG County is, their, their front and rear is at 25 feet, but we don't have to follow Prince George's County. We have our, we're one of the only, one of the few or only municipalities in the state of Maryland where we have our own planning and zoning. And if we wanna, if we wanna start with protecting our environment with sustainability and the green living that, that, we just had a survey done on the green living. I think the 50 feet should stand. I think it's a start to our green living and our sustainability. And I think it's the best way that we can do, instead of having these places right on top of each other. The, the, the one, the one apartment complex, when you go across Conti Road on Van Dusen and you look to your left and you see that apartment complex, my goodness. There, that is nothing but brick, mortar, concrete and asphalt. There is no, there is no hardly any green space in that development. And it goes very, very high, just like a lot of these places are, that are being built now. They go up in the air, I mean, three, four stories high. You can even look at the model that they put down at the Tux and Greens and look how high that is. But I believe we should keep it at 50 feet. And that'll at least assure any of these, any more new developments coming in that at least we're gonna get some sort of green space and some sort of yards. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I opened the public hearing at 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, no, no members of the public have signed up to speak.
I closed the public hearing at 7:00 PM. Second public hearing with possible action is scheduled for the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, January 25th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Our last agenda item for this evening is the introduction and first public hearing on ordinance, on ordinance number 1968. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend Chapter 2 Administration, Article 1 entitled General, Section 2-3 entitled City and Police Seal of the Laurel City Code to add all city department logos and official city branding logos to the section title and required written permission of the mayor and city council, of the mayor, excuse me, of the mayor to use the city or police seal or all city department logos and official city branding logos for non-related, for non-city related use. Mayor Mo, you have the floor. Mayor Mo?
Yes, I'm sorry, I couldn't get to my view. The only thing, I talked to Councilman Smith earlier, was on the phone with Larry about his concerns. Our solicitor feels the best way to, to do this, and we're gonna have to do it anyways, is when we update the policy, bring up the concerns of Councilman Smith and leave the legislation as is.
Okay.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. I, I opened the public hearing at 7:03. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, there are no members of the public that have signed up to speak.
Okay, I closed the public hearing at 7:03. Second public hearing with possible action at the mayor and city council meeting will be on Monday, January 25th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. If there's no other business to come before the council, come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.